All right, I'm kind of with you now.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody else caught up, you got what you need. Um, this is the budget amendment.
Yeah, that's just the financial. I forgot.
Okay, uh, one thing, make sure that y'all have noticed there should be a quote at the end of your packet for turning a tree that's crossing the road, like very last page. Let's be aware that that's in there. They came in today.
What road?
The very last page.
No, what road?
Hickory, Hickory Street, not Hickory Mountain. But Hickory Street, which is between Williams and Hardman, which is back over here. So. All right, everybody's caught up, if you're like, you're ready to get going. Uh, the water discussion is going to be fun. I'll go ahead and call to order the September 11, 2025 regular council meeting for the town of Tolu Falls. As we go into our moment of silence, remember that this is also September 11th. Uh, as we think of the families that lost loved ones, the first responders that gave their lives in response and, uh, just continue to pray for healing from that. So open a moment of silence. Amen. All right, need to have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
To move.
Jimmy makes the motion, Scott seconds, all in favor, unanimous. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Scott makes the motion, Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous. We don't have an attorney report, we don't have any old business, we will move on to new business. And first item under new business will be to update or, uh, recommended update for our business plan for the water department. Because we need to be able to tie rate increases into a normal schedule instead of waiting 20 years. It's been six years, seven years since the last increase. And we, that's, that's not, not sustainable at all. We have to have some way to set that increase into an automatic situation. I get, in fact, I forgot to send Linda that, uh, Denver is just going up on our rig for our water again this year. And I need to, I forgot to send that over to you. I got that like last week, got distracted. So.
Is that, I think that's the third one since I've been here.
Yeah. And it's it's strongly tied to ToCoa raising their rate. So Denver's just pat, really just passing that along. They may be adding padding it as well. I don't know. Uh, I didn't look at it that close, but we all know cost of living goes up. We'll have another conversation later about that. Um, item E, we talking about military. So, uh, I'm going to turn this part of it over to, I guess, Linda and Bill.
We've got Bill Powell from Georgia Roll Water on, on Zoom with us. And he is going to, he's done the review of our, our existing business plan. And he's come up with, um, an updated recommendation for us. So Bill, if you're there, you can unmute and take it away.
Okay, I'm here. Y'all got me?
Got you.
Okay. The business plan, the narrative on the business plan, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, I'm gonna turn y'all's volume up a little bit. I gotta. Okay, I barely can hear y'all. But the business plan really and truly is, uh, the only changes y'all made is when y'all went over to the, uh, uh, for your operation and maintenance of your water system, you've actually went under contract. And that's really about the only change that I changed in the narrative part of the business plan. But the what you, what you've got in before you are the spreadsheets for the calculation of the rates. And what I did, talking with Linda, I did a, a five-year, kind of a five-year projection and I did a five-year projection out there and, uh, I want to turn off the video, my video, and I'm gonna turn on, I'm gonna turn on the, uh,
Share.
Share screen, okay? Sharing is is not turned on. Send a request. I can't, is y'all, can y'all see my computer?
Not yet. She just gave you permission.
Do this again.
No, no, we're not seeing it.
It also has copies.
We have copies.
Can y'all see, can y'all see it now?
No.
Okay. All right, let's go on the paperwork. I'm gonna do it because I don't, because I didn't print it out. I got it all on my computer here. Uh, let's, I'm gonna pull that up myself and I'm gonna look at it. Let's go to sheet one. It says budget worksheet A.
Yep, got it.
All right, you see an operating budget of $102,000?
Correct.
You see a rate stabilization or reserve of 6,000? And I got a, a total amount of $108,000. Right now, if you look up at the top, you'll see 25 and then the first year over is 26. And that 107 is a 5% increase in your operating budget. And the 6,300 is 5% of your reserve fund. So somewhere right now where we are between 25 and 26, we should be somewhere between 108 and 113. Okay, for your operating budget for water. Now let's go to your next sheet, worksheet B. It says capital budget. You see, there's nothing there. Y'all have no capital project whatsoever. Now worksheet C, you'll see it, it got, it's got 2,000, 2,000, 2,000. That's the $6,000 that we're putting in a rate stabilization fund or a reserve. And that's in year 2025. So somewhere, we're gonna be working between the two, two years, 25 and 26. All right, so let's go to, let's go to your next sheet, sheet four. All right, now you have on yours 113,000 up there. But I moved it over to 108, which is fine, which is the same difference. All right, let's go on down. You see, what I did, I took your total amount of water that you bill your customers of 354,000. Everybody see that? You see the 350 for under worksheet D? Total amount of water building gallons?
Yes.
Yeah.
354,934 gallons. All right, you've got 42 customers on the main, uh, water meters inside and you got 29 on the mountainside. Talking with Linda, we're going to, those, those are really going to just be combined under one set of rates. All right, you see that, you see that additional ERUs down there? 77?
Yeah.
That's Georgia Power Company over there. They have a demand over there of 77 residences. All right. You're already building them this way. When we did this, I guess, six or seven years ago, we went ahead and set the ERUs up for the, for the power company. Well, what I've done is to to make that a little easier for Linda to calculate is she needs to pull up one year's worth of consumption for Georgia Power for their count. Then you go in there and you pick the highest month and calculate the ERUs on the highest month. Now George, if y'all are familiar with Georgia Power's demand system, they reset their demand every 30 minutes. But we're not resetting the demand but once a year. Okay, so right now you've got 100, you got 29 residences and you got actually 119 on the main system. We, we actually added George Power to that. So you've actually got 148 in equivalent residential customers. So you divide those numbers into your 354,000, you come up with 3,000 gallons is for your average consumption. But look right down at the bottom of that page, it says based on an average of 2,800 gallons of water. I want to make sure that we're going to generate enough revenue. So I, so I base my calculations on 2,800 gallons. All right. Next page on down is got, I got, it's got water inside, water mountainside. It's going to be the same dollar amount. We start off with a base charge of $33. You have no debt service and then you also, you, you currently are charging a $2 admin. So in other words, you got 33 plus 32. I mean, 33 plus two is $35. Right now, we need to, y'all need to make one correction. Is right now y'all are giving away 2,000 gallons of water with a minimum. Right now you're overcharging, overcharging Georgia Power by doing, because you, 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 you're up, you're giving the residential customer 2,000 gallons, but you're not giving that 2,000 gallons to George Power. So I'm saying in, in, in my presentation seven years ago was that we need to have a base charge for zero consumption. So in other words, so you look at 33 plus two, that's 35, that's going to be for the, the privileges of having water tied to your, to their, to, to, to the property, having the water available to the customer. Then if you use one gallon of water, you pay for one gallon. So for me, so right there, here's your and of course we could, we put everything in compliance with the Water Stewartship Act. We should, we start off with the very first gallon from 1 to 2,000 gallons is $4. 2,000, one to 5,000 is $5. 5,000, one to 10 is 550, 10,000 to 20 is 6, 20 to 50 is 650. Anything over 50,000 gallons is $7. All right, so in other words, if you, in this case, 2,800 gallons that we're using, so in other words, you, the first 2,000 gallons is, is $8, then 800 gallons at five is $4. Okay, so the actual, for a bill that's using 46, I mean, 30, 2,800 gallons of water, their bill is going to be $47. It's pretty simple. So all right, let's go to the very next page right here. This is, this tells the whole story right, right here. Pretty simple. Zero gallons, $33. Currently, $33 will go to $35. So what you would do, you're at, your customer is going to see a $2 a month increase. Then a customer using 1,000 gallons is currently going to be 33, is going to go to $39. A customer using 3,000 gallons is currently, I'm, I'm sorry, 3,000 gallons is going to be, uh, 37.50, you'll go to $48. Which is $10.50. That's all the increase you're going to see right now for your customers. Now, I did a five-year projection on this. And we don't need to go through all the calculations on that. Now I want you to go to, uh, let's see. Go to your next. Well, I wish I could, I wish y'all could see the screen I've got here. All right, when, when you go up, but you know is what we're going to do, we're going to project about a 5% increase. And, uh, let's, uh, do you have a little spreadsheet that's got that shows, uh, current, proposed, projected water bill for 2,000? But that should be 3,000, should be 3,000 gallons instead of two, should be for 3,000 gallons. Do you see that?
Yeah.
The last page.
The last page of it.
Okay, I wanna, I'm gonna share something with, do you see this screen now? Up there? What?
It'll look like this page.
No, but can you see what I'm holding up?
See that right there?
You see what I'm holding up? There it is, hey, I got you.
It says city of Tallulah Falls, five-year water rate projection?
Yes.
Alright, this is a little thing you might wanna add to your customer, to explain to them a little bit. This is kind of an ordinance. I did this for the city of Waynesboro, Georgia, not just, just this last week. Uh, it says the town of Tallulah Falls is implementing a five percent rate increase for the average customer using three thousand gallons of water per month. The five percent increase will start in twenty twenty-seven. Now, let's look right down there, right now you go into, currently for a customer using three thousand gallons, the current bill is thirty-seven fifty. You'll go to forty-eight. That's a ten dollars and fifty cent increase. In twenty twenty-seven, you'll go to fifty forty. These are not exact, exactly the, in other words, it may be, the increase may be two forty-eight or two forty-six or two forty-seven, but the average around this gonna be around two dollars and forty cents increase in their bill from twenty-six to twenty-seven. If y'all increased, if y'all pass the increase and go uh, implemented in January, we're looking at here in twenty-five, it's currently thirty-seven fifty, you'll go to forty-eight, which is ten dollars and fifty cents, which is a very small increase basically. And I said right here, the five percent increase will start in twenty twenty-seven and each year for the next five years. During the five years, Georgia Rural Water Association will do an evaluation of your water rates to make sure they are generating enough revenue to meet the requirements of your water system. Adjustments will be made if necessary. The following are the current rates for the twen, for twenty-five, the proposed rates for twenty-six and for the projected rates for the next five years. These rates are estimates and can vary a few cents from actual calculations. So we're looking at twenty, the, the, the increase right now is gonna go up for the average customer, ten dollars and fifty cent. Then the next year will go up two dollars and forty cent. The next year, two dollars and fifty cent, then two sixty-five, two seventy-eight, by two thirty-one, by twenty thirty-one, it'll be like two ninety-two. But all during these years, Georgia Rural Water, may not be me, but it'd be somebody, hopefully, they'll be doing evaluation, all Linda's got to do is call us and we can, one of us will come up and do an evaluation for you. I'm training, I'm training two guys right now with Georgia Rural Water to kinda take over after, at some point if I ever retire. So that is, does, does everybody un, 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 understand that?
Yes.
Yes, I believe you.
Yes.
I'm trying to get this thing out of here, get, get off of that. I got my IT person with me here helping me out on my computer today.
You got a grand kid with you? Okay, while he's doing that.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna hit stop share and I'm gonna come out of this.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Here, I'm, I'm back with, I think I'm back with you again. I think I'm, I think I'm on your video.
You are, yeah.
Okay, that's, I know that, that was a shock when that came on. I hope the glare off the top of my head's not blinding everybody there.
So, just real quick for our reference, Dimmerest is increasing our water rate from four point one eight per thousand gallons to one hundred, four point three oh per thousand gallons effective October of this year.
But it'll go, in other words, in other words, the, the, effective, whenever you effective, it'll go to four dollars from the, for, for the first gallon to two thousand gallons, it'll go to four dollars per thousand. Then from two thousand and one to five, it'll go to five dollars a thousand. Okay? This is a mandate by Governor Perdue in two thousand and ten when he implemented the Water Stewardship Act. You have to, this is what, this is what they call a water conservation oriented rate structure. But I assure you, going up fifty cents per thousand does not encourage conservation. Now, what I did tell Linda though, when I looked at your budget, the amount of money that y'all are budgeting to buy water from Dimmerest, is that, did y'all buy, y'all buy from Dimmerest?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. You're, if you used all that money to buy water, and if you're, if you're buying that much water, you're losing almost sixty percent of your water. And, and that's what we call unaccounted for water. That is water that you're losing, that you're not getting paid for. So we need to make a special, I mean conscientious effort to make sure that everything's accounted for, from your fire hydrant flushing and all that kinda stuff. Cuz you know, that's all part of the cost of operating a water system. But when I saw that dollar amount for the purchased water, I said, good gracious life, you're spending, if you're spending that much money, I think Linda, y'all paying how much, four dollars a thousand for the water?
So that's what Mayor Early was just um, gonna give us an update, we just got a notice from Dimmerest that they're raising our rate.
Right now, we're paying four dollars and eighteen cents per thousand. That rate's gonna go up next month to four dollars and thirty cents per thousand. So if we're able to charge our customers five dollars per thousand at the low rate, then that's gonna more than cover that cost, plus some of our losses.
Well, cuz right, right now, the, the, the new rates now to generate the revenue that you need, we can start at four dollars a thousand for the first two thousand gallons. That will cover, that will cover your, uh, you will generate over a hundred and eight thousand, you would, your budget right now is about a hundred and eight thousand, you will generate, cuz you're gonna be transferring, I'm also showing this now, that you're paying a fire hydrant maintenance fee. General Fund is paying water, two thousand dollars a month for a fire hydrant maintenance fee. General Fund is paying water, that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So that's, so that's, you know, that, but, but you might, might wanna go up or down on that depending on how much revenue you're generating. But right now, with these rates right now, to generate the red, the needed, the required revenue, we, we can start at four dollars a thousand for the first two thousand gallons and then go up to five dollars after two thousand gallons.
Okay.
But if, but if Dimmerest, now, I, I don't, if, if Dimmerest is getting ready to raise your rates, we're gonna need, we might need to look at that again instead of starting at four dollars, we may need to start at five dollars now. But see, I didn't know that from Dimmerest raising the rates there.
Yeah, they sent me this, uh, a few days ago. And they're only going up by about, what is that? Twelve cents a thousand, yeah. Yeah, twelve cents a thousand, so it's not a massive increase, but.
Well, what we could do mayor is actually come in there and say, okay, instead of starting off at four dollars a thousand, we can start off at four twenty or four fifteen a thousand.
Okay.
See what, and then go ahead and get that implemented into your software. Y'all get ready to set this up, have Linda, Linda can call me and I can work, and Linda, what software are y'all using?
Black Mountain.
Okay, I'm, I'm, Black Mountain's all for me, and we're familiar with that and there won't be any problem doing that. And that might be what you wanna do, being, that being Dimmerest is increasing your rates and just go and start off at four fifteen or four twenty-five for the first, for the, for the first, uh, two thousand gallons and then going up to five, the rest of the rate structure. But I, I, I mean, what I do is put in the, put in your ordinance an increase of five percent, but then, let's look at your rates every year and see if you need to make some adjustments on them. I mean, you can, you can, you can say that, I mean, we can say that, you know, five percent, but you talk to some of your operators out there, five percent is very, a very small amount, they don't, they cannot, their increases in operational chemicals and things like that are running more than five percent a year. And see, y'all, y'all only have very, y'all are a very small system. And compared to, you know, compared to Dimmerest itself, you know, the large system that, you know, they, you know, they have. So.
Well, we don't have, we don't have as much of the chemical purchases or anything like that because everything's coming through Dimmerest to us pre-treated.
Right.
Uh, we do have a couple of wells that we're trying to maintain as a backup in case something were to happen with Dimmerest. Um, but outside of that, we only have our contract with our, uh, our water operator.
Right, right.
Our operator.
And that's what, you know, they're, and they're trying to, you know, you know, they're trying to increase, go up on, on your bill so, cause, cause of their costs is going up. And normally a five percent increase, y'all may be okay with five percent increase, I mean, you may, but, but let's if, go ahead and implement that, but then look at your rates every year and see what, if you need to, you may wanna make, make an amendment to that, that ordinance, say, say, listen, we projected a five percent increase, but we're gonna only do a three percent increase. So y'all can make those changes as, as a situation changes.
Okay, and I think that was our main focus was to come up with an ordinance that tied this to something, that we have an annual rate increase so that everybody knows it's coming. It happens every year, we can adjust it as we want because we can't be doing this twenty years down the road, we gotta do this huge jump. Is it, that's hard for people to budget. It's hard for me. I like the three percent cost of living, but I'm okay with five if you guys are too, so I'm not gonna argue that in fact.
We can make a change, we can make a change and use three percent, I can make that change and send you that, you know, those numbers.
Raymond went up five percent.
Okay, well, Raymond went up five, then I think, I think it's reasonable because three percent's like the minimum cost of living increase that employers want to use. The truth of it is, is, is we're seeing increases in certain areas that are way above five and some they're at three and it's just all over the place right now, we don't know where all the tariffs are gonna come in yet and how that's gonna affect things, so I think five's reasonable if you guys do, so um, just wanted to get this out there so we can start talking about it, come up with something.
Mayor, one, one thing I want to suggest, make a comment on, y'all do have that fire protection charge in the, in your, that you get from general fund? That's twenty-four thousand dollars a year? That's in your budget, that's in y'all's budget now, that's, now, evidently, you, uh, that, that is a legitimate transfer from general fund to the water department. That's a, that's a legitimate transfer. Now, your tax base is probably pretty good in Tallulah Falls. I would think your property tax base is pretty good. Okay, well, anyway, but I'll give you, let me give you another suggestion here. General Fund receives from Georgia Power, y'all receive a, a franchise fee from Georgia Power. Okay? What is that franchise fee for? It's for Georgia Power to put their power lines on your right of way. Alright, where are your water lines? They're on your public right of way. Now, the state of Georgia says that you cannot, a city cannot impose a franchise fee on itself. So to get around that, we call it a public right of way usage fee. So you can transfer money from the water account to the general fund and call it a public right of way usage fee. So in other words, in lieu of increasing property taxes, you may wanna increase your water bills to send, to transfer money from the water account over to the general fund, that way. That's just an option.
Yeah, our, our water account used to be liquid, pardon the pun, first. Right now it's.
Right, I understand, I mean, but what happens, there's so many cities that I work with, I look at it and it says, what is this, they say, well, we had to borrow money from the water, the water account.
The Georgia Power, no, the park. Okay, the Georgia Power side of the like massive amount of Georgia Power, the water that they're paying for is for state.
Yeah, now, George Power, that is, is that, is the RV park over there, Linda, is that correct, the, the RV park? At George Power, that we, we, George Power? They got, they use, they, but they use a lot of water and I, I recalculated their ERUs and I came up with seventy-seven and that's where that seventy-seven is on your rate study. That's from the Georgia Power.
If I'm not mistaken, Georgia Power pays for every bit of water that goes across the dam. That means the beach area, the state park, the interpretive center.
Right.
I think all of that is being covered by Georgia Power. The only thing being paid for by the state park is we have another meter by the rock house that feeds back up to the maintenance shed where these, um, other people stay, the boaters park and all that. And I think the state park pays that out of their budget and Georgia Power pays for everything else.
Yeah, the state parks bill is usually the number.
Well, that's what, cuz Linda sent me the usage for Georgia Power and that's where that seventy-seven came from. Cuz like I said, you take one year's worth of consumption and pick the highest month out of that year and put it in that bottom, that, that bottom line on my ERU calculator and it'll calculate your ERUs for you. Did I send you that, did I, Linda, did I send that ERU calculator?
Yeah.
All you gotta do is put that consumption in that little box down there and it'll calculate the ERUs for you. And, and, and see, George Power, they, on their demand meters, they reset their demand meters every thirty minutes, we're talking about resetting it at once a year. And, but see, George Power, on their demand, if your demand goes down, your rate don't, doesn't go down e, e, either. The only time it goes, changes is when it, when it goes up. So y'all would apply the same methodology here. We, we wanna treat George Power just the same way they treat us.
No, we're gonna be better.
One thing about, and one thing too, if you don't do that, in other words, what would happen is grandma, if you don't charge the, the ERUs to George Power, then grandma that's uses very little water is gonna be paying more so George Power can pay less. And y'all don't want that. And, and y'all corrected that six, seven years ago when we first set, when we first set all this up. I can't believe it's been that, been that long since I was up there in that meeting, and then that, sitting along with y'all up there one, one, one night.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to revisit in the future is that it costs more money to pump water up to Gorgeview and Higginet Mountain than it does for the rest of town. But right now, I think splitting that, th, this minimal amount of, of, of increase being split and shared among all the residents is fine. But we may wanna come back and revisit some of that, uh, at some point because there's a lot of, there's a lot of, most of what I have to do, which I need to put onto somebody else is really driven by Gorgeview and Higginet Mountain. The vast majority of time taken away from my schedule, my personal time is tied directly to those two. And the amount of money to keep the pumps running, when we have to replace the pumps, all that stuff and it's Gorgeview's a small section, Higginet Mountain's a bigger section until we get, I mean, it's still gonna cost as much money to pump that water up there, but there'll be less strain on an individual once we get a tank in place up there. So, uh, so something to also keep in mind, uh, I'm not saying we wanna do it now, but maybe in the future, we wanna look at a slightly different rate schedule for different areas in town. But I think right now, we just need to get, we need to start somewhere and maybe this is where we started, so.
Mayor, in about a year or so, we can look at that, cuz I had looked at that about six or seven years ago, the different, the differential between the two, the difference in cost, but what I need is, we, we need more data on actual, give me some actual numbers that I can put in my formulas to best, to show a difference.
The water, the water operator at the time when you were here, well, that would've been Bill, they weren't tracking, they weren't tracking the, uh, the electrical meters at the locations, our new company. The electrical meters at the locations, our new company that's been. Been operating our system, they do. They track the readings at every location. So we can get a baseline to understand. Where that difference is, once we know what Georgia Power's charging per kilowatt hour.
When you, when you get that, we can, we can, we can put that into operating budget. Break it out and actually show, show what the actual cost for the, for the mountainside and the other side. We can do, we can do that, you know, next year, or the year after. Uh, they, they told me Georgia rule, I had to wait twelve more years before I could retire, so I'll be ninety-three then, so. So Jay Joe, I says, what's, what's the twelve years? He says, that's what I'm thinking about retiring. I says, I knew there had to be some reason for that twelve years. So, but he, that's why he, that's why I'm, I'm, this is my first Zoom right here. I'm having Cindy trying to help me with it. I'm having a little hard time doing this thing. But Jay is trying to keep me off the road. I mean, I must rather be at a face-to-face meeting with y'all, sitting here, standing up there and talking to you. I'd rather be doing that.
All right, so we'll, uh, we'll put any differentiation between zones. On next year's conversation. Where are we? Where are the council on this tonight?
Do you, you don't need a vote tonight, do you?
We don't have to have a vote tonight. This is presentation. If y'all want to make a vote, you want to table it until next month, come back to it.
I'd like to table it.
Okay. Y'all have any questions first before we table? Nobody? Okay. Scott's gonna make the motion. We table this until next month. Jay, uh, Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous. All right, thanks for the information. It's, uh, very good.
And Linda, if you got any questions, just call, just call me and I'll, if, if I need to send you any additional spreadsheets, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
And you can get, y'all can get Bill's information from Linda if y'all have some y'all want to type along.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, I'm fixing to get off of this thing if I know how. What I need to do.
Don't be taking any clothes off until you make sure.
Okay, I fixed, yeah, Cindy's pointing.
All right. So we're gonna table that until, I don't know, well, we said next month, so we can always table it again if we need to. All right, uh, Linda has a. Budget amendment from, for last year's budget. And that is, I guess it's a separate document.
That's a separate one. This is our, just our funding.
Oh, that's just a great financial report.
The budget is in the packet. I just forgot to. So the, the only thing, general fund did not need any kind of amendments. Everything else was kind of a cleanup just for the things that we approved throughout the year. Um, in the school zone, camera, the special revenue fund. The water fund and ARPA, they're included because instead of spending the money straight out of ARPA. I had to transfer it to water and spend it. The expenditure has to be paid out of water, so I had to show it as a transfer and then an expenditure on the water side. Instead of a straight expense to the. That's how. Julie likes to see it. So change that and then a hotel motel just changed to add in the. tourism product development piece of it from when we went from the five percent to the eight percent. I had to put that. Point that number in, so. But everything else is shows, if you look at the spreadsheet. And it'll show like the fifty-five, six twenty-five, that was the, the police safety equipment for the. No, for the axon. And then, um. Nothing changed on fire and then the. The general public safety stuff, that's all of our capital things that we approved throughout the year, so. They're all under those headings.
Yeah, so. How do we need to word this motion?
Just a motion to approve the budget amendment as proposed for.
I'll make the motion. Scott makes the motion when we have a second. Jimmy seconds. Any discussion or question unanimous, uh, all. All in favor, unanimous, blah, blah, that. All right. Next on the agenda. Is the gateway signage quote.
To get a concept of what the sign would look like. But they did not get it to me, but they made it, so. Um, I do not have that yet, but they came and looked at our signs. They said they're, they're rotted. So they're gonna have to completely redo them. So they asked me, did we want to do it? Based on kind of the same look as what is there. I said, probably so. If you can give me something to look at, you know.
I would like, my personal opinion is I would like it to look the same, like the same artwork, cause that was done by one of our local artists. Uh, I'd like to follow that and maybe follow the same shape. Do we want to think about, you know, kind of? But I'm also thinking we may want to do a rock monument like, uh, Clayton did.
Oh, that's.
That's gonna be pricey.
And that, and their monuments.
They did their sign. Didn't they get a DOT grant and DOT did it, did it? I don't know, we're talking about DOT.
I don't know, but I like the.
DOT milk. I didn't know.
Those were, those were nice. I was just wondering if we could take any of the artwork we used on the police car. And, and keep the branding the same for the sign. I don't know. Suggestion if we could, you know, some of the highlights that we have on that car, could we apply the same highlights for a new sign?
Well, the current signs have the falls and some of the other stuff. I think it has persistent trillium on it. Some other things like that that indicate. I just feel, I don't know, my opinion is what's on the cars a little more. I hate to say it this way, but cartoonish, which is fine for the car. But for an entry sign, I don't know.
Again, I like what Cornelia did.
I love what Cornelia did and if we could do something similar to that size, but maintain the artwork. I think, yeah, I'd be fine with that. I'm a little concerned about this, uh, vinyl graphics. I was kind of thinking something more carved. Even out of a foam. Probably painted.
Well, we basically had to start somewhere, so this is.
Totally fine with that. Oh, I'm pretty sure.
Cornelia or Havre County?
Yes, they, two, there are two entry signs to Cornelia now on the highway. They're an acid. They're in the, they're in the overleaf area. And it's for Cornelia. I don't know if Cornelia paid for them or Havre County paid for them, but I think it's Cornelia.
I think it's some kind of, they did something, some type of grant or something to do it to. I'm not saying we're gonna take, you know, how long it takes to do some of the DOT, so. For three thousand dollars and then go apply that grant if it, if it exists. But the DOT is out there building one thing.
Yeah, I didn't realize that. Yeah, I'm a. I'd like to see us explore it further, like, would we approve anything? Yeah, I'd definitely like a concept drawing because like I said, my vision was to have something a little more. Not grandiose, but something that would match with what the state park has. They have the rock columns and pillars and everything and. If we could mimic that to some degree, not matched exactly. But what, what Clayton did was a small version of what Cornelia did. So somewhere in between.
What sign material were, were, are you thinking? Cause that would help them ensure.
I'm not real sure, not familiar with what would survive as well. Uh, I knew a sign maker in Clarksville at one time. That made several signs for Main Street and they did it, they carved it out of a foam material. And then painted it.
Uh, Julius, he's the guy that did it.
And they, they seem to be pretty rugged and able to withstand the elements.
Yeah, they use a CNC router for it.
Yeah, that's why, that's how I kind of knew about it. Cause I was interested in that CNC router, um.
Yeah, the sign shop in Mountain City doing something for it.
But my concern with vinyl graphics is that. That sounds to me like a rap. Which is gonna fade over time. If you had a relief carved even foam, you can go back and paint that back in over time as it fades. Whereas with the vinyl graphics, you have to replace it each time. Or go over again each time and they don't last very long. In, in the grand scheme of things, but I'd like, I'd like to find something that we're not having to replace because it's rotting every.
And that's the thing in this insulation, well, they're gonna use existing six by six posts. I think one's damaged for sure. So I'm not sure that's possible, Wendy.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that either. Yeah, I. I'd first like to see what they can present as a. As a, uh, concept drawn. A little more detail. I would really like to have a rock or. Some kind of monument base that's gonna be either long-term, that if we do need to change a sign out, we just have to change the sign. Instead of changing how it attaches to the ground each time, to make it more permanent, something's gonna last. Gen- a generation or more. Let's leave a legacy. Yeah, that's what we're all about, right? Legacy building. All right, so let's keep going on that one. Um. So, do I need a motion? Motion to table until we can get a little bit more information. Scott's gonna make that motion. Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous. All right. All right, next is to review. Really just an update on the rock house plans. We talked about it last month. They are still working on it, uh.
I've got an update. Okay, so in your pocket. The, so the area, um, that was where the awning is. We can't enclose that because that's where the handicap parking is. So on the backside. Where the little patio slab was, that's gonna be on the other side of the restrooms. They are able to enclose that. So we have two options and they're both in your pocket. So there's options A and B. And one includes bumping out the, the top, like the office up top to go over the restrooms. Um, only and just enclosing the bottom patio area with access from the kitchen area. When then option B is bringing. That up also to where you would have that extra storage space. On the upper level too. So that maximizes your storage space on the bottom and the top.
Oh, extending it up seven feet, six inches. On the, okay, the, what he's, what they got labeled as chief's office could extend an additional seven feet. Which also means that we could extend this meeting room.
Right, so that. This went out, the, and then they moved this wall. And then on the other one, um.
Actually the same. Yeah, they're, they're just the same drawing again.
The other one should be A one, three B.
I have, you decided the storage room above the.
So it bumps the, the little restroom here out of the office and puts the rest of this as storage. So that would be on top of what's below.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I like that. I like A one, A one, one, two. Uh, do you have a? I've got one three B, I do.
Okay, so you see what?
One point two is the bottom four of them.
Three B is the other option to bring the upper level up on top of the storage area. Maybe this restroom out of the office to right there and we have this extra storage too. So this is the upper.
I'm all about increasing storage.
Opens up this for storage.
No, I feel like that.
Sometimes she has to keep tickets for so long, there's no room. She's at the store.
We're running, we're already running out, running out of space here. In this one building, sharing it among, well, five departments.
Again, we talked about storing tables, chairs, those kind of things for the community.
On the bottom.
Yeah, we can do that on the bottom underneath. So. I, I, you know, so A one, two, B, is that A one?
Which one maximizes the stores and models as well?
I said, so A one, two, that's your bottom level, so that's, that's your only option on that one. That's just. Including that, um, upper, I mean, the bottom, enclosing the bottom. The A one, three and A one, three B are your two options for going up on top of that to the upper level.
Yes, so go with option B on the top.
I second it. We need to acknowledge there and we're gonna. We're gonna go with A one, two for the lower level and A one, three B for the upper one. All right. Only a few more things. Okay, this is then pretty quick, uh. All right. We need to talk about military. We did our budget based on. A certain level of income. We can theoretically roll the miller rate back. So that we can maintain the budget that we created back in June. Beginning of July. My thought has always been, and we, we kind of had to do a lot of work and heavy lifting. To get our miller rate to six mil, which it has been since. I moved here early two thousand, well, late nineties. We tried to always maintain six mils. The problem is new legislation says we have to tell everybody it's a. Rate increase, which it is in a way because the cost of their properties went up. No, it's not brand new. We're supposed to have been doing that all along, but the point of it is. To me, because cost of living is going up, water rates are going up. We're talking about a five percent increase on water rates. If we maintain, if we just go ahead and dig in and try to maintain. Six mil is gonna be what we're trying to charge. I think what was, that was in the paper today, late. Someone, not Clayton. Somebody's Baldwin is talking about raising their mill rate to eleven. Mills. Not, not, not as low as, it's just a slight increase, but they're talking eleven mil. But they're wanting to hire some more employees or do some other stuff and they got a lot of pushback on it. I just, me personally, I just want to maintain six, even though we have to tell people, yeah, your out-of-pocket expense is gonna go up a little bit. But so are our expenses. We're not giving huge wages all over the place. We're not hiring new employees. We're just trying to. Cover the cost of doing business, paying insurances. Cover the cost of doing business, paying insurances. Paying electricity, I mean, heck, my personal power bill. Went from an average of about a hundred and twenty dollars a month. But this summer, I've been paying almost three hundred dollars a month. That's ridiculous. So, I know that the city's probably paying something similar, so. Uh, a similar increase, so we've got to. You gotta manage that increase, you can't just stay locked in at. A dollar amount each year and you've got to have some way to just tie in an increase, so. It's my opinion, y'all may have a different opinion, uh, so that's why this is coming up, we need to set our military rate. If we're gonna s- if we're gonna set it at six, then we need to advertise and hold public hearings.
Yeah, can I? Okay, so the rollback rates for Havisham County, so the rollback rate would have, would be. Five point nine five eight, so you're talking about a percentage tax increase of point seven. Very, very small. For Raven, it's a little bit more, rollback rate was five. Point eight five five, which is percentage uh tax increase of. Milage rate tax increase is two point four eight percent. So for the notice that I've got prepared for the newspaper. Um, at, if we keep it at six mils, which is an increase of zero mils as far as mileage rate. Um, for a home with a fair market value of three hundred thousand is seventeen dollars and forty cents. So we're not getting very, very little, if you have a. A non homesteaded property with a fair market value of a hundred and fifty is eight dollars and seventy cents. So this is not a huge tax. Increase that we're talking about, it would be. You know, not that hard to roll it back either, cause again, you're not raising that much money by doing the six, but it is keeping it as. The six mills and then kind of growing with your digest, that revenue instead of maintaining. You know, it let it lets you enjoy a little bit of growth to. To use.
Keeping in mind that because of the new tax law, homesteaded properties are gonna be locked in. And their value cannot increase more than a certain percentage based on whatever index they buy and choose on them. But also, which is interesting because our. Tax increase percentage in the Raven County size is two point four eight. As of the last conversation I had with Raven County officials, and this is not an official statement from them. They were more interested in getting this T S P L S passed this year. Than they are in bringing up the floss. The floss would actually benefit homeowners. Homestead, well, actually. Homesteaded properties. Because that rollback would be tremendous. If we did the floss, if it were to pass. But the county seems not, the county officials that I talked to were not interested, they didn't seem to be like it was gonna be a conversation. That was coming, and the whole point of us not opting out. Was because we thought they were gonna do the floss. And now they're pulling the rug out from under, so. Unfortunately, until the residents of Raven County go up there and hold their feet to the fire and say, we want a floss. That two point four eight percent, which I'm one of. Is, I mean, I think that. That's fair. Because Raven County is being that way. I think Havisham's gonna look at it next year. From what what I've heard, but that's not gonna help some of us, so. Anyway, so that's getting, that's kind of where we are. And so the que- first question is. Do we wanna stay with six mil and just make it a habit, start setting precedent, say, let's just try to hold what we can at six mil or? I mean, no one's under political pressure this year, we're not even having an election. So, so. How do you guys feel about it?
Intendedly, we've talked about dates for the public hearings, and I think we've got a quarrel.
And see what the public says.
Okay, yeah, the last, the October meeting, I'm the October ninth, I may be out of town, but hopefully Mike will be.
You have to make a motion and maintain six so you can start the hearings.
So intended in, yeah, technically adopt the management.
I'll make the motion, we maintain six. Ten to all six, start the public hearings. Uh, so if all in favor.
Alright, so we are going to advertise the public hearings for. September the twenty fifth. At nine AM.
Nine AM.
Um, October second at nine AM. And then October ninth will be our regular council meeting at six.
But get all on September public hearing.
Twenty fifth at nine, October second nine. And then October ninth, we'll have the public hearing at six, follow our regular.
Okay, I thought we had had three. Alright, so. Motion seconded and passed. Uh, I'm gonna let. Greg and talk about the next item, safety corridor replacement.
This sound like what I got, the only person I can get to it, but then before we start paving out here. On River Street, the paving for River Street scheduled to end of September, they're they're giving me tenant dates, end of September, first of October. So we wanna get the pipe repaired before we put fresh asphalt on top of it, that makes sense, so. There's no asphalt cost in the, well, that was sent, it's. Gonna be just slip concrete across the top level with the current asphalt, and no overlay the asphalt on top of that. Hopefully it'll take them about a week to put it in, we'll maintain a twelve foot lane. By switching traffic back and forth on that little bit of road, I know it seems tight. And it is tight. So, and I talked to Kate, we're gonna take out. Four of her trees. And then we'll have to replace that in the future, and that's not in this current budget. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure if she wants a fence or some bushes or what, that we'll have to replace those later, so I'll be asking for some money on that. I don't know what the amount is, but I'm not sure what she wants, but this amount of money. Is a little bit above what we've already previously proved, what we previously proved.
Sixty five at our last meetings, and I wanted enough to.
Yeah, so I need ten thousand more.
Who's removing the trees in this?
This is the whole thing.
Well, I just wondered if we could have them take care of this tree that fell.
Oh, I just, I just want them to get in there and work it down, they may actually, they may actually hire someone to take the tree out. But I need them to get down.
The tree has fallen, but it's about to, so.
I'm making a motion.
Yeah. I'll second it. Need to prove it. Unanimous, uh, all in favor, unanimous? Alright. You also have the uh. I know this can be a long conversation, we're gonna have to argue a lot about this. Submitted a application to come back. I'll second it.
All in favor.
The only problem I have is it's not long enough. I know, it's not. Not even two months. Yeah, my my A C unit. Decided to wait until two days after Gary left of. Kick the bucket. I'm waiting for him to come back through town at one day, anyway. Alright, the last item on our agenda is a figureable quote from Deadwood. There's a tree on Hickory Street that grows. On private, starts on private property. Grows up and over the power lines. And a subscriber line. And it's coming down and touching, the branches are touching the ground on the other side of the road. Yeah, it's it's, it's a nice archway. It's a nice archway, it gives great shape, but. I had Deadwood come out and look at it because it's it's. There are some dead branches up there from a previous. Uh, I think uh another company came through and just used a great, like some kind of extension on their arm. And just obliterated a bunch of the branches that are some up there that are hanging, that are gonna drop. Over the road and that becomes a liability for the town.
Who owns the property, you're cutting it off. Just so we don't get into that.
We've already talked to the property owner and gotten permission to take the entire tree down. That's now Deadwood would only cut it back to the right of way if they didn't, didn't want us taking it down. But the property owner said we can take it. We made it in writing. Yeah, it's 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 that.
Okay.
So, um. Anyway, so you will.
Um, I make a motion, we accept the quote based on. The the first that you get an easement.
I have a question though, I mean, why are we paying two hundred and forty five dollars to pay by credit, why aren't we just writing a check for this? We probably.
You will, okay, yeah.
This is just their. Alright, uh, I have no mayor's comments. You have a public comment?
I'm making a motion, that's a great thing.
Wanted to see if David had a comment, I don't think we have anybody. Oh, Terry's online, so and you know, so.
Meeting in the thirty Tuesday and uh, things are proceeding as we've discussed before, they're. They had their professional people there on Tuesday to put the media. They call it media in filter number two. Uh, at of the uh, uh plant on. And they hope to be running that this week, so that's, that's going to get investors and. After that, they intend to. Put back between filter number one and filter number two so that they're not using them as much as they. Have been before, and we're gonna be pumping more water from the north plant. Which is up on the Tennessee River, because we don't have to pay for that water, and we don't have to pay Georgia Power to pump it. Okay, so that was the gravity feed that they put in, the big barrel and everything. It seems to be really working okay, and the next big project is gonna be sewers, I think, and um. They're getting a lot of work with the D O T, they're working on four forty one of. There's a lot of um. Talking to each other about. So things are. Things are going pretty well with regard to uh what the authorities do, I'm reading as far as I can. Um, if you know in the paper, they settled their whole dispute with the city and um. I was hoping it would resolve a few things. So, but I do have a question for you. It's great that kids. That's fine. But. What, what kind of military rate increase would it take to actually get an employee for the city to do that? To do what given done. Or do we need one in the first place?
Yes. I think I asked, I estimated, I think, two years ago, that between Gary and Donna, which is. They need way more than the twenty four required. I estimated that they provided over seventy thousand dollars worth of. Uh, labor to the town based on. A formula that's put out every year. By independent sector, I think it's. So I would assume that if we needed someone to do just general maintenance and so forth. We're looking at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, even if it was part time. Probably looking, be looking at at least thirty thousand dollars.
Full time would be probably a full mill.
Yeah, so one more mill for a full time employee. So.
That covers your labor burden and all that.
You have to have, uh, if they're full time, we'd have to have uh. Insurance, we have to have retirement, we have to have health and dental and all the stuff that we offer already for everybody else, so.
It's something you can bring up in the hearings. That are coming up.
Yeah.
We have to make sense, and that way you can get a fill for more of what the public is thinking. We now, we understand what you're saying.
Now, we'll, I will throw this in there as well. I don't know that we need a full time maintenance person. But I could sure use a part time public safety. Person that can help with some of the fire stuff, fire reports, fire, ma- just maintaining. The paperwork for the fire department and stuff like that is. It's really been killing me. Between everything else on the. But if we made that part of their, maybe make it a public safety, public works. Position, then part of that salary could also come out of. The camera fund, potentially. It wouldn't be the whole salary because they'd be doing things that aren't related to public safety. Specifically, so.
Mike, it shouldn't be killing him. The workload should not be killing him.
Well, I'm a glutton for punishment.
Unfortunate.
Let's discuss it in the hearings.
That is a great point. Okay, um.
I will just add, if we wanted to go above six. That would require.
Require a different ad.
Re-advertise.
So maybe, maybe next year. Maybe next year, well, or re-advertise, okay. Uh, to tie, kind of tie into what David said earlier, Greg. We're looking at, we got a bid for that water line to go to that. This first house on the lake. Right here just past the dock, they're wanting to get city water if they can. The only way to really make that happen financially, in a financially. Reasonable cost is that we're gonna coordinate with the po- the culvert replacement. During the water line underneath those, the new culvert.
Running on top, I don't know, I think there might be enough, I'm putting sixty in, so this is gonna be real tight.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be too shallow, so we don't go underneath.
Well, you just, what you do is you just put a casing in, so you can slide your water line to the later, updating everything up.
Right, yeah, that, so that's what we wanna, we wanna coordinate with that if he decides he wants to pay the cost to tie in.
Where does it gonna come from?
It's gonna have to come from this intersection here.
Oh, which side of that intersection?
It's on this, on this side.
I go under the right, the where the phone system is, one string?
No, over by where the hydrant is.
Oh, God, I started across that intersection?
Had started the hydrant go out, so I wanna put at least a three inch line in, in case we need to provide water above T F R O. At a future date, I mean, if we're going in, if they're going in and doing that, but I think the homeowner would have to cover a lot of that cost.
I worry about getting it under the pipe just because I think we're gonna end up hitting solid rock. Pipes, I think those pipes are sitting on solid rock. That makes sense, this is a rock shelf out in the lake right there. Other words, they, when they dug that out, they just laid a pipeline. Get one in there, fine, we can do it now, all it is, is sleeve, piece casing, yeah, I got some at the office, but. You may end up having to put the casing on top or be insulated, especially if you find.
Let's just at least keep that in mind.
If you make it a steel casing, you gotta worry about cars running over it, it'll protect it.
Right. We got room between the pavement and the.
We'll show when he digs it up next week, or not next week, we got. I was hoping you could move him next week, so we're pushing it the bottom week, but that's, it's gonna be, the locates are out there.
Okay. Okay, we'll uh try to coordinate that. So I just wanted to. Bring that up since it was on my mind that we need to coordinate. Otherwise they'd have to drill, and I think that's the.
Like I said, well, well, I'll bring a piece of casing out. And we'll see if we get it on top or bottom.
Alright, any other public comment from our online people? Okay, nothing, I'm gonna go ahead and uh. We don't need executive session, so motion to adjourn. Whoa. Scott second, it's all in favor. And we need a photo finish replay of that.